... June 18th will now come to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Sir, does anybody have any comments or corrections?
Would we accept the minutes from the May 21st, 2019 meeting as submitted?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the AT&amp;T 11 Avon Road Site Plan Amendment. AT&amp;T is requesting site plan amendments to 11 Avon Road to install antennas on the water tower and ground support equipment in reference to Section 199, Site Plan Completeness. So this is a hearing for completeness. And just before we start, I want to ask Maureen something that goes to the very heart of completeness here, which is one of the emails we received mentioned that this is a non-conforming site and the zoning does not support this use in any manner. And it seems to me if that's true or if they need a zoning variance, we would not even be able to be here looking at this. So I wonder if you could comment on that and enlighten us.
Sure. So the site already has antennas installed by Verizon. And prior to the planning board granting approval for those antennas, there was a significant amount of litigation regarding a zoning board of appeals decision. And that whole issue of whether or not this is an alternative tower structure was already litigated. So it doesn't have to meet the minimum lot size for a new commercial tower because it's not being reviewed as a new commercial tower. It's being treated as an alternative tower structure. And so I would advise the planning board that issues regarding the non-conformance of the lot have already been decided and that you are now looking at adding antennas to a site that's already been approved for telecommunication equipment.
When you say it's been litigated, what does that mean?
That means that the, there was a decision by the zoning board. That decision was appealed. It went to court. It was remanded. It was adjudicated by the zoning board again. It went back to court again. So the whole issue of whether or not telecommunication equipment can be allowed on this site has already been decided.
Didn't that go to federal court?
I don't, you know, that was one of those court cases that was regarding the zoning board rather than the planning board. So I'm not as familiar with it and I'm happy that I'm not as familiar with it. But if you want, I can, I can get you the, I mean, there were multiple decisions and it went before the zoning board multiple times.
The bottom line is that the town lost and forced the issue of it coming before the planning board, the Verizon site?
Yeah. If there is a question regarding a lot size or compliance with the zoning dimensional standards, that needs to be addressed before someone can apply for planning board site plan review. So the fact that it's gotten here, it's already been addressed. It was addressed before the Verizon antennas were approved and the code officer should have not referred it back to the planning board for the AT&amp;T antennas if there were still outstanding issues. So I would say it's already been addressed. Thank you.
Okay, so you can introduce yourselves and proceed.
Sure. My name is Ted Small. I'm counsel for the applicant and I'm here with Kristen LeDuke, who's a representative I think I just want to start off with a brief introduction to the project and then address a few of the issues that there were questions about completeness and then take it from there if that's okay with you folks. This is, as you all know, a project intended or a project in which AT&amp;T is looking to add new antennas to an existing water tower that already has wireless antennas that serve Verizon. So this is essentially, AT&amp;T is essentially looking to be treated the same as Verizon was in the sense that looking to have equal access to a site that will provide cellular service. On top of that, the service that will be provided by AT&amp;T will close communication gaps in Cape Elizabeth. I don't mean that to convey the message that it'll close all cellular gaps in Cape Elizabeth, but it will close some gaps in coverage and we can provide more detail about that tonight as you see fit. In addition to sort of consumer service that would be provided by this project, this project would also be part of AT&amp;T's FirstNet network, which is a project intended, AT&amp;T's got the exclusive contract to construct the FirstNet infrastructure in the country. FirstNet is set up basically in response to 9/11 when there were problems with communications between first responders. And this is an attempt to address those problems. What would happen in the event of an emergency, the antennas being provided, if installed by AT&amp;T for this project, would provide exclusive service to first responders. It would basically shut down the consumer aspect on that particular antenna and provide first responders with their own network that they could communicate with each other. So not only is this project going to close gaps for consumers, it's going to provide an exclusive safety net, if you will, for first responders in the event of an emergency. The project itself will not change the existing property much at all. There will be a small new pad installed that would be 18, eight by 17 feet, eight feet by 17 feet in size. That would add very little bit, very little to erosion control issues. We have in a packet that has been provided this afternoon, provided new information on erosion control measures that will be implemented. There were a couple of other issues that were flagged as potentially not complete. I'll just walk through them. One was erosion control. Again, we've provided more detail on that. I can provide you a citation in the new materials if needed. Lighting was an issue that was addressed. The lighting for the project has been removed. There was originally, the plan was there was going to be one small light that would only come on at certain points in time. That has been taken out of the project, so there's no need to further address the lighting Noise, we have provided some additional detail on that. We have an engineer that's done some studies to determine what the sound level would be with the existing generator that's planned to be used. AT&amp;T is proposing to install a fence and some sound attenuation blankets that will control the sound. The engineer has pledged to work further with us and you folks to ensure that any sound from the generators would meet all thresholds as required by the ordinance. But just a little further detail on that. The generator in question here would only come into play when there's a loss of power for a considerable period of time. If there's a loss of power, what happens is batteries serving the project would supply power for six to eight hours. It's only after that power would be diminished that a generator would kick on. And then the generator would only be on for the purposes of recharging the batteries. Once the batteries are recharged, generator would kick off again. So as it stands now, we believe that the generator, it's either meeting or is close to meeting the requirements. Again, we're, we have an engineer who will do whatever is necessary to further reduce it. But just one further point on that, because the generator will only be coming on when there's a power outage or other emergency, it would also seem to us that at such a time there would be other generators in the area that would kick on. And our view of it is that if you're measuring the noise level created by the generator at this project, it's against the background noise, background noise levels. And those noise levels are going to be higher with other generators in the area kicking up. So we believe that the generator does and will meet threshold requirements. Financial and technical capability, I believe as recently as today, yesterday, we got, there was confirmation provided to the town planner that AT&amp;T meets the financial and technical capabilities for the project. So I believe with that, I've addressed all of the issues where there was a question about completeness. Does anyone have any questions about those issues? Should we provide the packets of the new information that were provided to you earlier, Maureen?
The applicant, excuse me, the planning board does not have those.
Right. Should we provide those?
Those are the packages that have the additional erosion information.
Yes.
And the fact that there's no lighting and the letter on the noise.
Correct.
Then I would think the planning board would want those.
Sure.
Sure. All right, we'll pass those out.
There's one question, one question I had on completeness. Was there a, a coverage map that's going to show the improved service that was given to us?
Yes.
It was, you know? Okay, I saw that and I couldn't decipher it. It didn't look like there was any difference between page two and three.
When you say coverage, you mean of the service?
Yes.
Yes.
The improvements.
To the chair.
Yep.
I think the third page shows additional coverage and they just didn't update the title of the third page.
Okay.
So the third page shows a lot more green.
Okay. But it doesn't really hit the, all right, I guess I'll ask a question.
We, and we do have someone here who can provide more information about that from a technical aspect. I understand the maps may be a little bit difficult to decipher, but I do think as we can show, that they do show that the addition of this project will close some gaps. And we'll get it blown up for you so we can point it out in some detail.
Just on, with regard, I don't need it blown up.
Yep.
But, so if I'm reading this map correctly, it does look like there's improved service north of where the tower would go in, but not much going south into what we sort of call the two lights area. I know you're not from here, but.
I know the two lights area.
Okay. Yeah. But is that, is that accurate? Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, I believe you are.
Okay.
All right. Does anybody else have questions on completeness? Okay, well then, did you want to make a statement as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're just dealing with completeness at this point, I think.
Great. All right, well, we're now going to open the hearing to public here, public comment. And is there anybody here who wishes to comment on the issue of completeness of the application? All right, seeing none, we'll close the hearing to public comment and open the board for Peter?
This is a, I guess, just a question, and that is, this, the new antennas will be serving existing wireless communications facilities of one type or another. Does this new facility have, offer any service to the new 5G communications developments that are coming at us down the road?
Yes, that's correct. There will be. We have our RF engineers on hand who can probably speak best to that question.
Could you please identify yourself?
Name is Sohail Usmani. I'm the RF engineer for this project. U.S.M.A.N.I.
So Sohail needs to design all of these good things. Could you come to the microphone, please?
Sohail designs all of the antennas for the coverage and the 5G and the FirstNet that will be included in this site.
Yeah, my question at the moment is only about completeness. So if you could just contribute any information as to your submission and how it might be available to these other technologies that are coming.
So what, I'm not clear on the question. Is it, is it going to be 5G capable?
Yeah, essentially, is it five, is it, are we looking at only serving existing technologies on your submission or is it 5G capable or adaptable?
When 5G will become available, then yes, this hardware should support 5G service.
Were you involved in the sound calculations?
No. I'm an engineer.
I have a question. This is of Maureen. It's regarding the sound issue. We are provided just now with this sound engineer's study. My question is, is this enough to get them through completion? You've listed it as partial. This sort of says, it's very hand-wavy, to be honest, kind of loose, saying that they will work with them to do that. Does that meet completion standards to say we will work with them to do that and not say basically, we will, you know, what the actual method of getting there is?
So there, there are two things that the board has to make determination on, whether or not an application is complete and then whether or not standards are met. And that's your call. Completeness is always the issue of, was enough information submitted to begin the review? And completeness does not, if you're deemed complete on an item, that doesn't mean automatically that you're going to meet the standard. So you could find tonight that enough information has been provided to, to begin the discussion. You could deem it complete and still find that you're not satisfied at this point that standards have been met. Or you could determine that you're just not even close to being complete. Or you could determine that it looks like it's complete and you're fairly comfortable they've demonstrated compliance with the standards. So that, that is the planning board's job to do that. Does that help? Okay.
Jim?
One, I thought we had a local, local noise ordinance. We don't?
We have standards regarding noise in the site plan regulations and anticipating that that might be an issue. The standards are on page 274 for anyone who has their ordinance in front of them. And it talks about the maximum permissible A weighted decibel level of a continuous, regular, or frequent, or intermittent source of sound produced by unique activities, structures, or equipment on the site shall be limited by the time period and by the budding land use as listed below. And so this is a residential zone and from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., the maximum decibel level as measured at the property line is not supposed to exceed 55 decibels. From 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., the maximum decibel as measured at the property line is not allowed to exceed 45 decibels. But I, I did bring this up when the planning board was reviewing the Verizon antennas and the associated generator for Verizon, that it does say, "A sound produced by unique activities, structures, or equipment on the site." So I'm not recommending the board do this, but I do think you could look at the, the idea that the generator is something that's only going to be used in an emergency situation. And then in that situation, there's going to be other generators going off in the neighborhood. That doesn't mean that you still shouldn't hold each generator to the 55 and the 45 decibel. You already have one generator on the site that is, has demonstrated, I believe to your satisfaction, that it can meet the standard. And then the question is, when you have multiple generators running at the same time, one, what is the likelihood you're going to have both of them running at the same time when this one is batteries for six to eight hours? And then does it need to meet this or is that not unique?
I'm wrestling with this because I've had to do sound calculations before. I saw your email, but only about a half hour ago about that. And that is correct since it's on a logarithmic scale. And I'll try not to put everybody to sleep on this, but they're not directly additive. So if you've got two generators at the same sound level, that doesn't mean it's going to be twice as loud. And it's not. It's going to be less than that. And I'm accustomed to seeing the data provided in octave bands and frequencies, not just one number. So I'm wrestling with this as far as completeness. You could cherry pick a certain octave band and pick out that decibel level because it's less than what's required, but that doesn't mean, like I said, it gets into the weeds. So I'm wrestling with the completeness part on that.
Carol Anne?
I'd like to suggest that I don't disagree with what Jim's saying because I don't necessarily understand every bit of it. But that is getting into the nitty gritty that can be addressed after we act on completeness. It's something we can say.
But I guess I was getting, was it complete? Do we have enough data to be?
Do we have enough information to move this forward? Do we like all the information? Maybe we do and maybe we don't. And if we don't, we tell them, before you come back to us again, we need you to, to present this in a way that is more clear to everybody.
Yeah, I agree with Carol, with you.
So that's what I'm suggesting, is we move with completeness and then get into, is it 5G? Is it the, you know, all that detail?
And they've indicated they have an acoustical engineer on board and so it sounds like they're prepared to go forward and provide this information.
A real quick question. What about testing? Usually, you know, generators are tested, sometimes weekly, sometimes monthly. It depends on the site. I know that telephone companies do that and some other companies.
It's typically, it's typically tested monthly and they will coordinate with Verizon to be on their test schedule if that helps, you know, mitigate any additional noise, you know, with, you know, recurrence of it.
Okay. And then one other question about noise. I know that the hut has an air conditioning unit. So when that kicks on, usually there's a condenser that's involved with that. And so there's, there's going to be some noise additive to the generator and that could, that could be operating, you know, during the summertime when it's, when it's, you know, humid and hot and whatnot. So will the acoustical engineer take that into account?
We can definitely ask him that as well.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Most certainly.
Thanks.
Okay, any other?
My understanding is the engineer is willing to take everything into consideration and do whatever we need to do to make it work.
Yeah. No, we, yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I feel like a motion ought to be.
I would love a motion.
And then we can get into much more fun. If I can find it. Here it is. Motion for completeness. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of AT&amp;T to install antennas on the water tower located at 11 Avon Road be deemed complete.
Second? All in favor? It's unanimous? Okay, so moving on.
So I guess there's a clear directive from at least two of our board members that we want more detail on noise, on all noise, all things that generate noise for the next meeting.
Does anyone have questions or comments on anything other than noise?
John? Well, it's related to noise, but it's not the same request with regards to the testing. Have you maximized the noise buffers that you could put within or around the generator? I know there were blankets that were mentioned. There's a stockade fence that was mentioned.
Correct.
Is there anything more that you could do or you could provide?
They will look at more, but without having the generator actually on site, there, it's kind of them estimating what needs to be done. But they will ultimately do what it needs to be to bring it down to the threshold, whether it's, you know, planting additional shrubs or, you know, another sound blankening on the gate or however, you know, even, they brought up even positioning it in such a way that it, it, you know, minimizes it more.
And that would just be my suggestion, that there'd be some showing that you're, you're taking that action. Because I remember when Verizon was here and we talked about this issue with noise and that we realized that they probably weren't going to be the only game in town at the end of the day, that this is sort of like having a party. And if you have three guests, they might not make a hell of a noise, but if it gets up to 10 or 20 or 50, or 50, then it's going to get a lot more noisy and you're going to get a lot more complaints. And at the end of the day, if the code enforcement comes and says it's too noisy, then you're all going to get shut down.
Right.
And so just, I'd just say tread lightly and keep that in the consideration, even though you might be compliant, you got to remember that Verizon's there already and there might be another person that comes along or another company that comes along too. So just consider it and please max out as much as you can.
Will do.
Thanks.
Okay, Peter?
Maureen, help me remember, on Verizon, did we not require that they put a roof on the generator enclosure?
I, I would have to go back and check. I know you did require a wood fence and there were sound dampening blankets.
And baffling, and I think they didn't plan to do a roof.
I thought we had more of an ice shield than a roof, but I would have to check.
Okay. But that was, I think, another noise dampening device, which my memory tells me we talked about. I think they did something along that line. So I assume that the board would probably be wanting an equivalence at least of the structure for the previous applicant.
Jim?
I guess, yeah, you said other than noise, but yeah, it's kind of related to noise. Based on experience, and looking at the planes, you already got a box around it, right? Insulated box. It's pretty much all you can do for a generator. Most of the noise comes out the exhaust pipe, just like in a car. So if wherever that pipe is pointed, that's where the noise is going to go, regardless if you've got a box around the generator itself. So one of the things I've done, you know, I'll probably mention it when we're there during the site walk, point it up in an angle of pipe so it don't get rain in there. It'll help keep the sound down. But that's going off on a tangent. Would it be possible to find out when, what schedule Verizon has their generator running to exercise it, to time it around our site walk? I don't know. I have no idea who to ask about that. I'm sure you don't either, you know?
Unfortunately, I can look into it. I don't know if it's on the schedule of your lease that you have Verizon or.
Yeah. It'd be nice if we could actually see, hear the thing running. I know, obviously, it's not yours. You have no control over it. I understand. It's just more of a qualitative thing.
Peter?
Yeah, just to add one person's opinion here, I don't know the noise output of your generator versus the standard home generator that you find scattered throughout the neighborhoods. I must say that these home generators are pretty much a fixture of life now.
Oh, my God.
They go on. They go on when the power is out, and noise levels probably exceed the decibel limits that we have, but for good reason, it keeps things going. And I do appreciate the context of this generator only going on when it's needed, and then only to charge the batteries. And I didn't realize that, I thought it would be an ongoing running issue. So, I personally do not find myself too concerned if the generator generates in the area of a home generator's level of noise, because that is really part of our daily life, just like snow blowers, and lawn mowers, and other things, you know, kind of happen. So in terms of risk and danger to the neighborhood in an isolated, like, location like this one, somewhat isolated, to me, it is not a, doesn't sound like a massive risk. I just wanted to throw that out there.
And, yeah, keep in mind that the standard is for the decibel level at the property line.
At the boundary, right.
And you're quite a distance from your property lines.
The closest, the butter is 200 feet, I believe.
So that's quite a bit more than the house next door's generator cranking on. Maureen.
I would like to make a request, though, and I understand that you talked about the distance from other properties, but the standard in the ordinance is from your property line. So while maybe, you may want to include that information of how far away you are from actual other homes.
Right.
I think it's really important that whatever you provide talks about the decibel level at your property line.
Yeah, you're only 43 feet, 28 feet realistically, not 200, so, you know, I wouldn't keep saying that because it's very obvious in your plan. I actually had a comment on the plan. This is just a very minor detail, but last I knew neither Bangor Hydro nor Fairport Communications still existed, nor were they probably your customer, you were probably not a customer of theirs, given that we are in CMP land, and Bangor doesn't actually exist any longer, and they're a Mera, right?
What page you are?
Oh, page one. Sorry, T1. It lists who your power company and fiber company were. It's probably lifted off an old plan, I imagine, but, might as well be correct.
I can hear your question.
They're listing incorrectly, I assume.
He wants the references updated.
Yeah. I mean, it should be correct if it's going to be submitted.
Oops. Carol Anne.
I have a question that's not related to noise. You're removing a light. What, how is that going to work for a technician? What's the plan if there's no lighting on the little structure?
They'll be instructed to always, they do have flashlights with them as part of their toolkit. It will be noted in their access, their access code, we call it, you know, whether it's a combination lock or whatever that they need to bring, whether it's a ladder to get to. That will be included to, you know, always have a flashlight to.
So, that's not uncommon?
No, not at all.
Dan?
Yeah, I've got just two quick, non-noise questions on the drawings. The fiber run on drawing E1, it's just noted as being to be determined, because are you guys going to be excavating to connect new fiber into the hut, and then, you know, make all those connections? And if it's to be determined, and, you know, what is that length? Or is that something that, you know, your team is still going to be working on?
The fiber, they've looked at it. It will come off the closest pole, and then they, they call it a transport walk, is when they determine it. But they will follow the existing fiber route that is either trench.
It's trench.
Yeah. So it will follow that.
Okay. Okay. And then, on drawing G1, there's a grounding plan that shows grounding outside of the fence structure. So that's going to, that's buried. Isn't that a buried grounding? You've got grounding rods, and?
Yeah.
And so that's going to be part of the construction project, and then if there's going to be some type of landscaping, that goes in after, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay, since we do have the RF engineers here, is there anyone who wants to dig a little deeper into the coverage map?
I couldn't quite follow it if I'm, assuming I'm looking at the right one.
So the last page is the expanded, and you can see there's more green.
This is, this is, this is, looks like just a little bit of work.
What, what do you reference? They're not numbered.
Yeah, this, this two maps is one, that the blue star represents the location of the water tank with the post site. And try, just go back to the other map, and, you know, you have two pages, that the addition of the green and some orange color in that second map is the coverage that the water tank will be provided. Gentlemen, as we don't ask the question, going to the south, there is a terrain map that you might have out, and that's going to go to the two lights area. And there's, you know, ups and downs on that road, and that terrain map explains, you know. Mind you, this, these coverage maps are minus 83 and minus 93. That doesn't mean that the cell phone will work after that, but?
Can you just tell us what that means? I'm not too familiar with the?
Minus 83 EBN is the coverage you would expect when you're inside a building, so you should be able to make, you know, you should be able to use your phone or voice data later. Minus 93 is when you're inside vehicle, you know, driving on the road or outside coverage. That is supposed to be reliable coverage, they call it in the standard of wireless. And beyond that, it doesn't mean that you don't, you know, it's a drop, drop dead, you know, it's RF, it's wireless. You, you probably, you may get, you may get coverage here, so the, you know, the white areas, but it's not shown because as per standards, we, you know, the wireless carriers don't provide a lot of coverage, so it's not.
So is this a model? This is a model, right?
Yes.
It's a model. Okay.
It's a prediction model.
Right. Okay.
Joe.
So that was a good observation.
Jonathan?
So, when you say the area that's in the white, it says below threshold, does that mean that there's no coverage, or there's just not quote-unquote reliable coverage?
It's not that.
All right.
Although it's not reliable, would it be upgraded from what it now exists, even in that white area? Can you predict that one at all?
Based on the height that's available on the water tank and the terrain around, especially to the south. So, blue, these are the precedent clouds that I was talking about. So these areas are dips in the terrain, and then the darker colors are where it tends to rise.
Right.
According to this terrain map. So these are dips. And as you travel along Route 7, then you go up and down on those, and that's where you, you know, based on the low red center of the height of the water tank, and the tree height around the water tank, it prevents the coverage from getting to those, which creates sort of a valley.
No, I understand that, and we do appreciate that the difficulties that the terrain imposes to the south of the tower. But my question is, would the addition of your antennas, even though it wouldn't raise the coverage south of the tower to a reliable level, do you believe it would improve the coverage that is in that southern area?
With this site, the reliable coverage is shown here, and it is pretty accurate in respect to the prediction model.
So it would not improve it to the south? Where it remains white, you're saying it would not improve it, even though it didn't raise it to a level of reliability?
Uh, no.
Anything else on RF coverage?
No, I just want to make one comment on that. When the Verizon came in, there was made a representation that it was going to improve a lot of service in the Broad Cove area, and I'm not sure if that service ever came to fruition, but at least we're getting a more accurate, I guess, depiction of the service down in that area. But it does show from the map coverage that north of there, it seems like there's going to be a vast improvement in the Old Ocean House area.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
I appreciate the representation.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the photo simulations that were handed out?
I just want to say I'm sorry for it being foggy that day. And I don't mean to, I don't know if I'm belaboring the point, but is it possible to do it on a sunny day, just to see if, I don't know. If nobody else cares, then I don't want to make them go out and do it, but I did just make that observation that unfortunately it wasn't on a sunny day.
Do you need short supply of those?
They have.
If that's something the board would like to see?
Hey, if nobody else wants it, then okay.
I mean, it's a water tower with more antennas on it.
Yeah.
I'm good with it as is. All right.
I guess I, the coverage, I guess I would have expected more improvement in the coverage area. It all seems to be to the north. It is what it is, I guess, but I would have expected more. I guess the cost justifies it, but, I don't know, I'm not sure I'm making a good point, but I just would have expected more.
We're going to have, I'd like to have a, per the request of one of the butters, I would like to have a site walk.
Yeah. Yes.
So to kind of beat the dead horse on this whole coverage issue, is, is the inability to improve the coverage to the south just due to topography, or is it also a consequence of how you've chosen to place your antennas on the water tower?
It is due to.
You have to go over to?
It is, it is due to the height on the water tank, and we're at the highest point, at least the prediction that we ran. And also, due to the fact that the terrain dips and rises.
Thank you.
Can I ask one related question? What is the height of the wa, I'm sure it's in the materials, but what is the height at the water tower that you'll be putting it up at?
The height, the, the center line of the antennas is 75 feet.
75 feet, so.
And the water tank top is 80 feet.
And usually cell towers are 180 feet?
It varies, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Try to go as high as we can.
Right. So if the water tower was higher, then the coverage would most likely be better?
Then, then we do layer on with the, you know, the antennas, when they're higher up. Imagine a torch, you know, if a torch is shattered that way, and you just do it that, you can get it to exactly the.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, so, no more questions? Let's, yeah, figure out a time for a site walk? We want to do this soon, I take it?
I am given the application next week, which you can do without.
Okay. When are you coming back?
It's a good question. July 1st, maybe. I mean, if you do it first thing in the morning, I'll just.
I make a motion that Maureen cancels her vacation.
Feels for lack of a second. Can I put that in the minutes?
All right, so.
You can do it this week?
This week, yeah. Wednesday or Friday morning, early? Friday morning, early?
This Friday?
This coming Friday, 21.
Friday's better, morning's better for me.
I can't do Friday.
Nor can I.
Okay.
Is there an after-work time that works for everyone?
I'm on vacation too. Although, how can you be on vacation when you're retired?
Is tomorrow? Can we schedule tomorrow afternoon, or is that not enough time for noticing?
I think you can do it.
I can't do tomorrow afternoon.
Can you do any time after work this week?
I could do Thursday after, probably at 5:00 or so.
And so can I. I can't do tomorrow either.
I could do Thursday.
Thursday, I cannot. I can't do Thursday. Tomorrow I could, Thursday, I'm on a plane.
Thursday, like, the day after tomorrow, I can't do.
Okay. What about next, are you, next week, what's people's availability?
I'm back.
How's Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 25th?
I just throw that out.
I'll have it next Monday, 24.
Monday, the 24th.
Early?
What's early?
Early.
I start working 7:30.
Yeah, I'd rather do in the afternoon on Monday if that works, or?
That's fine with me.
Monday, 5:30?
Monday, yeah.
5:30?
Is that something the applicant can do?
We'll make arrangements to be, yeah. Whatever's convenient for you.
So Monday at 5?
Monday at 5:30.
5:30.
Okay. So that's Monday, June 24?
Yep.
I'll bring the bug spray.
Okay, everybody knows where it is. Great. So we need a motion to table?
I don't know what they, but I'll find it.
Go ahead.
Motion for public hearing. Be it ordered that the application for AT&amp;T to install antennas on the water tower located 11 Avon Road be tabled to the July 16, 2019, meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, everybody.
Other business is public comment? Does anybody wish to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous?